All right. I'm gonna take it out of the public setting and bring it up to the city council for a discussion. I think it probably is important to remember that the staff has suggested that we accept the report as is, and if somebody wanted to make a modification of that, this is a place where they would bring that up and discuss that. And I assume that we're gonna go in that direction.
I have a question for staff. Do we make stings on these vaping shops the same as we do on cigarette stops shops every year?
Yes. Would we do our compliance checks on tobacco retailers, whether it be a 7-Eleven or a vape shop? We do all those compliance checks.
And do they pay the same fee for a vaping shop as they do a tobacco store?
They do.
And do they have the same penalties as a tobacco store if they sell to a minor?
Yes.
Good. Gary?
Well, actually, we don't have any just vaping shops in the city. So I think most of the people that spoke here are from other cities or the county. And we wanna bear in mind that the county of San Diego will be, looks like they're gonna ban the sale of the all vaping devices, at least a moratorium for several months, and they're going to ban the sale of the flavored vaping devices. So we're probably gonna have kids coming into El Cajon to buy their vaping devices. I think at the bare minimum that we should ask staff to come back with some ordinances that would ban the sale of the USB look-alike devices and other devices that don't look like e-cigarette devices. And I trust that Morgan can come up with some very specific language that would pass constitutional muster. That would be at a bare minimum. And we have, let's take the look at how this is shaking out here. We've got a number of people that came in, and some with very good points, that belonged to the organization that was affiliated with a neighborhood market association. We've been dealing with that group for many years, and they're always saying, yeah, let us do it, and it's never been successful for alcohol or tobacco, never. They always say, let us do it, and then it always falls apart, and they're still selling it to kids. So they don't have a whole lot of credibility with me. But, and I understand they make money from selling vaping devices, that's their living. And as Molly said, and you were very well spoken, Molly, she's on board with the compromise. Now, on the other side, we've got the parents. California PTA, which is no small organization, the elementary school kids that are 12-years-old are vaping. They're saying, please, city council, do something. The high school district, which is all pretty conservative guys on there that don't believe in government overreach, we've got the school district that's run by Shadow Mountain Church, one of the biggest churches in town, the school district that's run by Foothills, which is one of the biggest churches in town. These people don't make money off of vaping. They wanna save the kids. So, just like if I, and I think we have a responsibility to do that. If I saw Phil Ortiz's little boy running out in the street on Washington, I'd run out there after him and pull him in. That's my responsibility. It's my responsibility to keep these extremely dangerous devices out of the hands of our children. Parents can't be there 24 hours a day. We have devices that are created, in my opinion, to appeal to children.
Right.
There's no reason that an adult needs a vaping device that's disguised as a hoodie. There's no reason an adult needs a vaping disguise, a vaping device that's disguised as a USB drive. You know, that, we're asking the adults to maybe, just to have a tiny, tiny bit of inconvenience to save 27% of our high school population who'll be adults and they will be addicted to nicotine by the time they're grown up, if they aren't already. We have to stop it. You know, this is just a disaster in the making. So I'm gonna make a proposal that we ask the staff to come back with ordinance that would ban all of the devices that are designed to deceive the teachers and the parents that look like something other than a vaping device. And we have the majority of the people in the vaping business that think that's a good idea. So I think this is a great compromise. You know, we've listened to the vaping people. Molly, I really appreciate your comments. Very informed. I think you're a really great person. So that will be my, that will be my motion.
Second.
As a motion, as a second, as a point of order, I would ask that the other council members have a chance to weigh in before we vote. Would you be comfortable with that?
I'm fine with that.
Steve, or?
Well, anytime government creates an ordinance, you have to look at unintended consequences. Do you solve one problem and create another? So I always kind of think that way. I am concerned that the vaping stores are being demonized because I think, my understanding is they sell a water-based product, which is different than things that you get online or not in retail stores, which is an oil-based product. And it is the oil-based product, which is including the vitamin E acetate, which is creating what's commonly known as wet lung. Times have changed. Man, when some of us were kids, we'd go to 7-Eleven, buy those little cigarette packs with the candy cigarettes, and there's a little stick of sugar that you would blow on, and powdered sugar would come off, and you just felt real cool for smoking a candy cigarette. And now here we are, talking about 12-year-olds with a fake USB, you know, smoking nicotine. So it's too bad that we've devolved that way. I'm concerned about the rights of people. I'm concerned about parental rights and responsibilities towards their kids and overreaching there. I'm concerned about restricting adults' rights to what is now illegal, a legal product still, until the FDA says no more. And in the retail stores, I think they have a lot to lose by selling bad product. They lose their store, they lose their investment, they lose their rent. When you buy online, that person has no liability, no, try to go after somebody who sells stuff online that's bad. And that's where the scary stuff is. So I really get concerned about banning product in retail stores takes away the rights of adults, who I do believe have a right to wean themselves off of smoking or just enjoy it because they enjoy it, and it doesn't solve the problem. You can still get this product in a non-retail environment, and that's what kids are doing in many cases. So I don't think a ban on the product in retail stores solves the problem. I think it only pushes people towards a more illicit source that can be very dangerous for everybody, including kids. As far as these, I'll call them carriers, or disguised carriers, I understand a ban, I don't believe it solves the problem. We can say we'll stop selling in retail stores, but people will get them from online sources, they'll get them from friends, they'll get them from social media. So I'm concerned that a ban is symbolic. It doesn't really address how people get things, which is probably more often not in a retail environment. But I, I don't, I don't know of an unintended consequence of a ban. My only concern would be is if we ban the carriers, does that push people towards a more nefarious source? And now you've gotten into a bigger problem than just buying a fake USB, now they're actually buying bad product from that person. That's a concern that I have.
Gary, why don't we let everybody go through it, I'll give you the final say.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the concern of, and the question that we're dealing with here is, how do we protect children while not limiting people's rights? And I have a good friend that I spoke to regarding this topic, Coast Guard veteran, smoked since he was 16-years-old, and he kicked the habit through e-cigarettes, and now he doesn't smoke anymore. Nine years he used it, which is an odd term, because that's how long you used it. And I don't, I don't, I don't, Steve, you put it very well. I don't know if the solution that we're presenting is going to solve the issue. And one question, I don't know if we, do we keep, or does the school district in our district keep data of the incidences where vaping products are confiscated on campus? Because if we're gonna implement any kind of policy, I'm a firm believer of reviewing that policy to see if it's actually affecting what we intend to affect. So, did you know that, staff, or?
I'm unaware of how they deal with when they confiscate a device, what the penalty is or is not, and, or what policies they have.
And is, would that be, with regard to penalty for the minor, is that a state law that would need to occur? Some kind of, similar to a minor using alcohol, or a minor caught with cigarettes?
Sounds like there's a state law that prohibits the sales or use by minors of electronic vaping devices, just as there is for tobacco. As mentioned before, the age now for tobacco sales, and I think for e-vaping is 21-years. So there must be something, I haven't looked into it, but there must be some state law that also controls that for minors.
So with El Cajon PD?
I think Gary has an answer to your question.
Gary, please.
Phil, I do have an answer for you. The state, I know this because of the stings, they don't have to go to get special permission anymore to do, when the kids come in and try to buy tobacco. And that, the, there is no, the burden by the state has been shifted to the retailer. It's not, actually, the kid can't get in trouble for buying tobacco, essentially. So, you know, and, you know, and I actually agree with that, because I think the burden should be on the adult that's selling them, the illegal product. But 70%, we had someone here to testify that 70% of the sales to children are from local retailers. So I'm just looking, see, I don't think it's that big of a deal to have an adult not buy the, you know, an Apple Watch that's actually a hidden vaping device, or a hoodie that's a hidden vaping device, or something that's, that looks like a USB device. And, and, see, the problem is, we've got 27% of the high school kids vaping, that's huge! And we're asking for just 10% of the adults to use something that doesn't look like a USB. So that's a small price to pay, you know, for that. Just like we have, you know, adult books and magazines have to be in a store that's 660-feet away from a school or a church to protect the kids. You know, that's part, sometimes it's a slight bit of convenience. You know, we're talking a problem, we're talking a product that, that will make them addicted for the rest of their lives. I mean, even, even if we say they don't have the vitamin E acetate in it, and it doesn't kill you, like the 2,000 people they killed, or thousands of that's been hospitalized, it's still a really bad thing. And it's just a slight tweak in the ordinance, which is way less than what the county is doing. I mean, the county looks like they're gonna ban, they've already voted to have an ordinance come back to completely ban vaping devices and put them, or at least ban them for a moratorium for about six months, and to completely ban the flavored devices. We're not even talking to doing this. The county's doing this much, I'm talking about doing this much.
I've got a question.
Well, I don't think Phil was finished. After Phil's done, I'll...
I, I, I understand, and I don't, I would, I would like to see how, hmm, I'd like to see data. I like to make my decisions based on data, and it's, I don't know that we've seen data from the school districts of what the current numbers are with regard to use in our district, and then be able to see the reduction in use with a hypothetical ordinance. The government is a sword, and I'm just very cautious when I use it. And I guess I'll just leave it at that.
I had promised Steve next.
So, Mr. Foley, this is a question, that the vaping carriers, you know, when I say carrier, I mean a device to, to cover a jewel, or something, or an iPhone case, or something. Are those considered covered under vaping products? Was that part of your question?
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, another part of the question.
I'm not sure we have it defined that way yet in our code.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you define the carriers as part of the vaping product, then it's illegal to sell that carrier to anybody under 21. It's considered the same as any other vape juice, vape, vape device, vape accessory, probably is a good word. And instead of a ban, if it's just included in all those things which are illegal to sell to people under 21, does that accomplish the purpose?
Well, I think, I think our ordinance does refer to electronic vaping devices in the tobacco retail licensing, but it's only for the purposes of regulating and licensing what kind of stores would be subject to our licensing regulations and penalties for violating the sales. So I think, and I'd have to look it up here, but I think it does include the definition of electronic vaping devices, as well as tobacco products in those types of descriptions.
While Mr. Foley was talking, I did look it up, because it is your next agenda item. And under the definition, it does say that electronic vapor devices means any device with a heating element, a battery, or electronic circuit. So I think it does exclude what you're referring to, Mr. Goble, as sort of a disguising device out in our current definition.
I'm just wondering if it's a legal, if it is legal to include accessories as a definition with the electronic nicotine delivery, E N D S, or whatever it's called.
Again, I think any one of these devices have to have a heating element, that's the industry out there, and so it's either small batteries that heat it, or it's the large batteries that heat it. So they would fall within this definition of, under our tobacco retail licensing ordinance.
I understand that. Let me use the metaphor, a difference between an iPhone and iPhone cover. We know that the iPhone is the heating element device. I'm saying the iPhone cover, which covers the heating device, that sounds like that's not currently covered in our municipal code.
Yeah, but I'm not quite sure, and I don't know enough about these products, I'm not quite sure if these are covers, as you say, carriers, as opposed to the actual vaping device itself. That's something we'd have to look at.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for you, because I don't understand it.
I understand, I understand. I, go ahead.
So I think, again, and I don't understand it fully either, I've done enough YouTube searching to prepare for this presentation. So, for example, the iPhone is an actual device that has a battery in it that you can actually hit a, take a puff off of that. So that would clearly be, in my mind, defined as a device. It has a heating element. The USB port sleeve that we showed, that was just a sleeve. In fact, you could make the argument that it's to keep paper clips, too, right? I mean, that would be, that would be maybe more difficult to define without being vague. But there are probably some devices that are used for disguising purposes that do not have the heating element, that do not have the definition of a device that we currently have, because they are just used for that as a camouflage, not as a device that looks like something else.
Yeah, I'm trying to distinguish between the carrier, the non-heating element cover that covers up one of those devices versus a counterfeit iPhone, which really is a heating element vaping device. And this is the confusion that I think we have in trying to define these things.
Gary, did you wanna say something else?
You know, if we don't do something, and I think at the minimum banning these look-alike devices, and some kid dies, I'm gonna feel really bad, or, you know, so I think this is the bare minimum that we should do. The other thing is, we can do an ordinance that has a sunset clause, so it runs out when the FDA comes up with their rules. And that's, what, May 20th, or something like that? They're supposed to do that? And then, in the meantime, we ask the school districts for data to see if this reduces things.
You have a motion on the table and a second. If you wanna make a different motion, you could rescind your motion and make a different motion.
So I'll rescind that motion and make a motion that we do, we asked the city, the staff to come back with some ordinances for us to choose from that would ban the look-alike devices. And that would be specifically the USB look-alike devices that can be used as electronic cigarettes. And then, and one of our options would be have a sunset clause, and also to get some information from the school districts. Obviously, if the California PTA, the elementary school district, high school district, Shadow Mountain School District, Foothills School District writes us a letter saying, do something, I really feel we have an obligation to do something, or at least explore it a little bit more. There is a problem. And we had testimony that 70% of the kids that buy it, buy it retail. Gosh, if we could reduce the problem by 70%, that'd be incredible. So you had that motion? That will be my motion.
Well, first, I think you need the second, Mr. McClellan first, to withdraw his second on the first motion.
And I'll second the new motion.
Okay. I'm gonna be voting no on this motion, I'll tell you why. It's not because I'm in favor of smoking, I'm not, I'm not in favor of smoking, I'm not in favor of vaping, I'm not in favor of marijuana. I think, as a healthcare professional, I've spent all my life, I, I'm really not in favor of putting anything into your lungs that is not air. It just, but having said that, I'm also American, and I believe a lot in freedom, and I'm very afraid of what a trend I see in this country is of slowly giving away our freedoms for safety. And I wanna put in perspective, the CDC says 39 people have died from vaping in 24 different states. This last year, we had 5,500 people killed in motorcycle deaths. We had 40,000 people killed in automobile deaths. And here's the big one, 300,000 people will die this year for obesity-related illnesses. Now, if we're gonna use the logic that we have to protect kids from themselves because they're gonna go out and do something stupid, and they're gonna get addicted to nicotine, then let's go after the big one. Let's say, you know, 65% of kids drink a Coca-Cola every day, and 25% of kids have a candy bar every day. Shouldn't we be going after anybody who's trying to kill our kids by giving them Coca-Cola or candy bars? And of course, that's kind of an absurdity, because we accept addiction to sugar, just like we accept addiction to alcohol. But there's probably no substance known to man that's killed more people than alcohol. And yet, we, we accept it, because we've decided as a, as a country that people have the right to do that, because they're free. Even though I think it's a very bad thing to do, I think it's a really, really bad And just so you don't think I'm a little over the top here, I want you to think about some of the other freedoms that politicians and political people are trying to take right now. There is a proposal right now by Cory Booker and Congressman Cortez, they would like to prevent the eating of meat. They would like to make it illegal to eat meat, because if we have cows, cows will have flatulence, and flatulence will provide more global warming, and we're all gonna die from global warming. So they, they honestly believe it's a matter of life and death, that we should be stopped from eating meat. There was a law that almost passed last year in California that would have banned the Bible because it offended people in the LGBT community. There, there are countries all over the West right now that are making it against the law to use gender pronouns that are not consistent with what somebody wants their gender pronoun to be. Basically compelling speech, and telling people that you can be imprisoned or sued because of what you say, or what you think, or because you don't go along with what the, what the crowd says you need to go along with right now. So I, I don't want kids to smoke, I don't want kids to have special concealed things. And it's irritating, and, you know, we should, we should, as parents, I think we should really work on stopping that. But I really think it's a dangerous slippery slope to start doling out our freedoms and saying, just take this freedom, and just take that freedom, and just take that freedom, because it's freedoms I don't care about. But what happens when they come after your Bible next year? Or they come after your meat the year after that? Or they come after my soda, which I sadly am addicted to and love? I wanna, I wanna, by the way, I wanna quit drinking sodas, I've made, I've made a few good, good stabs at it, but I sure don't want the government to tell me I have to. So that's why I'm gonna vote no, and I, I get all the reasons for doing it. I think everybody comes at this from a point of love and a point of caring about the community. It's just a difference of opinion, and to me, freedom's pretty important.
Well, first of all, I'm not, I'm not advocating banning the Bible or any of those other things. Tobacco is actually the only legal product that, when used as directed, it will kill you, and it can kill the people around you. It kills 450,000 people a year. Secondhand smoke kills about $41,000 a year. I'm talking about stopping the sale of devices that are specifically designed to trick the parents and the teachers to allow kids to use an extremely dangerous product. That's the only thing I'm talking about. So I'll leave it at that.
How, how does this ban solve the problem? That's what I, I'm trying to get my hands around.
Yeah, well, we had testimony that 70% of the sales to minors are local, are from local retailers. Actually, I don't think it's the, the vaping people are selling that. I think it's the, some of the other retailers that send, sell 10 or 12 of those different devices.
But if it's the retailer selling it, it's illegal to do so, and isn't the punishment the right course of action there, rather than to ban the product which takes away the adults' rights?
Clearly, what we're doing now isn't working now. We can double the number of stings. I know that the NMA influenced the state law when they said, oh, the, it's okay for the kid on the state, on the state level, on the state stings, the kid can lie and say, yeah, I'm, the kid can't lie, he can, in real life, when a kid comes in to buy a tobacco product, the kid says, he'll say, oh, of course, I'm 21. But because the influence from the NMA, when the law was designed at the state, they're not allowed to lie. So that way, they know that the kid can, the kid is a sting operator, if they say, are you 21? And he says, no, I'm not 21, they don't sell it to them. So that's, that's been my experience over the last 15 years. But anyway, we have a motion.
I don't, yeah, I don't wanna dampen debate, but I, is there any more information that we don't have, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's, let's vote on it. There's a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second on the table.
And remind, this is to come back with a possible, just the six, uh, one of the options would be a six-month sunset clause till the FDA steps in.
All right, everybody understand? Motion on the table with a second, please vote.
Motion fails by a 3-2 vote, with Ortiz, Goble, and Wells voting no, McClellan, Kendrick voting yes.
How would the council like a five minutes to take care of whatever they have to take care of? Um, we're gonna take a short break, and we'll come back in about five minutes and continue with the meeting. Thank you.